I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Here.
Mr. Franco.
I'm here.
Mr. Cabrera.
I'm here. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, nineteen seventy-five, the notice requirements have been satisfied as to the time, place, and date of holding said meeting by posting notice on the bulletin board here in Borough Hall, and by mailing and emailing same to the Herald of Cape May County and the Press of Atlantic City on October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. In the event of an emergency, your emergency exit is our front left, your back right, or the door just by the American flag. A couple of quick announcements. Just want to do a sound check with audio. Brian, are we good to go? Back there in the back? All right. This meeting is being shown live here today on the Borough's YouTube and Facebook channel. In the event you want to ask a public comment, you need to use the dial-in access number eight-eight-eight-three-six-three-four-seven-three-four, and when prompted, you're going to enter the access code nine-six-nine-nine-zero-two-zero followed by the pound or the hashtag. I want to make a note that the live comments that are being asked on Facebook and/or YouTube are not monitored. So if you're going to ask the question, you need to use the dial-in conference line. If you watch the recorded version of this meeting and you have questions, you're more than welcome to email our clerk at clerk@wilewoudcrest.org, or you may phone her at six oh nine seven two nine eight zero four zero. Madam Clerk, will you have the resolutions, please?
Yes, sir. The first is, the first one we have to pull, so we're going to the next one, is authorizing a word of professional services contract for architectural design preparation for renovations to the municipal building to include the master plan and schematic design to Gerald Blackman and the firm O.S.K. Design Partners, P.A., at the not-to-exceed sum of twenty-eight thousand five hundred twenty dollars.
Motion.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing Borough Engineer Work Order for Crest Fishing Pier Conceptual Design and Cape May County Open Space Grant Application Services at the not-to-exceed sum of nine thousand.
I'll motion it.
I will second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing Borough Engineer Work Order for Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty-Six NJ DOT State Aid Program Municipal Aid Transit Village Bike Ways and Safe Streets to Transit's Program at the not-to-exceed sum of two thousand.
I'll motion it.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing Borough Engineer Work Order for NJ DEP CAFRA Individual and Waterfront Development Permit Application for the Crest Fishing Pier Replacement at the not-to-exceed sum of fifteen thousand.
Motion it.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing Borough Engineer Work Order for Sanitary Sewer Improvements NJ Infrastructure Bank Application Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty-five Clean Water Application Engineering Design and Construction Phase Services at the not-to-exceed sum of one hundred eighty thousand.
Motion.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing a word of professional services contract to William J. Kaufman of Nemad Davis and Goldstein as Special Conflict Solicitor for the Borough of Wildwood Crest Planning Board at the not-to-exceed sum of ten thousand.
Motion.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Abstain.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing increase of contract in the amount of five thousand to Michael Jedziniek of Hill Wallack LLP for COA-related matters.
I'll motion it.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing a professional services contract with Jeffrey Serenian Esquire of Serenian Edwards Buzak and Nolan LLC as Special Counsel for COA-related matters from May fifth through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, at the not-to-exceed sum of ten thousand.
Motion.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing the appointment of one Class One Officer.
Motion it.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing a word of professional services contract to Colliers Engineering and Design for Professional Grant Preparation Services for the Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty-five Safe Streets and Roads for All Program at the not-to-exceed sum of seven thousand.
I'll motion it.
I will second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is adopting a civility policy pertaining to the public interactions with Borough employees.
I'll motion it.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
The next four by consent agenda. The first is authorizing pedaling truck license to Island Produce for two thousand twenty-five. The next is Big Top Ice Cream LLC for two thousand twenty-five. The next is Monster Cone LLC for two thousand twenty-five, and finally to A&amp;T Ice LLC for two thousand twenty-five.
I will motion by consensus.
I will second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolutions be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing amendment to the two thousand twenty-five municipal budget to account for additional funding from the Greater Wildwood Tourism Improvement Development Authority for the two thousand twenty-five Create in the Crest Arts Festival Grant.
I'll motion it.
I will second.
It's been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing expenditure to purchase a two thousand twenty-five Ford F-250 pickup truck for Public Works Department under state contract in the amount of seventy-two thousand four hundred four dollars.
I'll motion it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is waiving special events application additional fees to Crest Coffee Company.
I'll motion it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing refund of mercantile license and tourism fees to John and Jamie Birch.
Motion it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is designating May twentieth through May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, as National Public Works Week in the Borough of Wildwood Crest.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing refund of property taxes or utilities overpayment made payable to CoreLogic.
Motion.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing expenditure for the purchase of security barricades with fork slots under Somerset County Cooperative Purchasing Program.
I'll motion.
I will second.
It's been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing a shared services agreement by and between the Borough of Stone Harbor and the Borough of Wildwood Crest for Uniform Construction Code Administration and Enforcement Services.
I'll motion it.
I'll second.
Have a question about that.
Sure.
So for the shared services, I was under the impression that we were going to have some sort of a study done or discussion about, and we just were going right into sharing. Unfortunately, I'm concerned about it, so I'm going to be a no on that one, just to let everybody know.
That was discussed, Commissioner, in the last meeting when we had, gave the option to go into a discussion and to explore that.
Right.
With construction and Stone Harbor, and I think packets were emailed to you, and Francine may have had some correspondence with you regarding that situation.
Once again, I just, I don't remember having that discussion. I thought we were going to have. It's just my opinion, so just thought I'd let you know, but thank you.
Are you ready for a roll call?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
No.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing application to the Fiscal Year Local Efficiency Achievement Program LEAP Grant through the Department of Community Affairs for the purpose of a shared service with the Borough of Stone Harbor for Uniform Construction Code Administration and Enforcement Service.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
I'll take the money.
Next is designating May eighteenth through twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the Borough of Wildwood Crest.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Lastly is authorizing advertisement of a notice to bidders for Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty-five NJ Water Bank Number S three-four-zero-seven-one-nine-dash-zero-five Various Sanitary Sewer Improvements.
Motion it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Motion that all bills properly authorized as submitted be paid.
I'll second it.
It has been moved and seconded that all bills properly authorized as submitted be paid. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Thanks, Trish.
Sure.
Got bills?
Correspondence.
Correspondence, nothing listed. Under discussion items, under new business, first one, the Love Statue, so I had asked our clerk to forward everybody a concept of kind of a, it's a, it's an awareness campaign, but also getting a statue done, made with the recyclable materials that are found as trash that are remaining on our beach when Love Blue, our nonprofit agency picks up on the beach on their Sundays. All their recycling materials would be gathered up that are picked up off of the beach. Again, their campaign is all about keeping the ocean and the waterways clean. To have that recycling materials turned into a piece of art, which would be displayed on the lawn at the Arts Pavilion. So it's a message aware campaign, so awareness campaign. This also supports the Love Statue, I'm sorry, the Love Statue would support the Arts Pavilion, and it would go on the exterior. So similar to the bike statue that you see at the end of the bike path at Rambler Road where everybody gets their picture taken, this would be something very similar. I know our CFO is in here today. She did confirm that funding, a lot of it through grant money, is in place, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody was on board with it so that we could begin to move forward with that project, and at least get the people to know when they participate in the beach cleanups that those recyclable materials will be used towards a good purpose in the community.
I have no problem with it, Mayor. I think this was floated by the Green Team maybe four or five years ago, and I thought it was a good idea then. It kind of just died on the vine, but I think right now that I'm okay with it.
Love Blue does a lot, picks up a lot of trash off the beach. They do a nice job.
Okay. You good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so that direct reflect, the governing body is good to go. Next one, item of business, ordinance to regulate traffic signals in Wildwood Crest. Yeah, you want to take that?
That would be a nice thing. We'll have to take a look at it a little bit different. We'll go through Ralph, we'll go through the chief of police, and we'll figure out which ones need to kind of sync up a little bit. It is a pain once in a while to get Spock in there, sitting at the next one, and Spock. We will take a look at it. Thank you.
All right. And the last, ordinance prohibiting parking large vehicles. I believe our solicitor circulated a draft ordinance amendment on New Jersey Avenue, just to clarify. So that is the county roadway from Cressy down to Rambler. That will also be the subject area of the road diet. When large vehicles and box trucks park on the, on the street as it exists now, and even in the intersection, I think it blocks the sightlines. So I think it's a public safety issue. So that said, I had asked Ron to put together a draft, and I think everybody has that. If anybody has any questions, feel free to ask. If everybody's okay with it, then I think we could introduce it at the next meeting.
Ron, I have a question about this. The only problem is, as you know, for every action, there's a reaction there, right? So we're going to tell them they are not allowed to be able to park there on that specific area, but they will most probably park on a residential block, on east-west blocks. So how do we want to, and residents are going to be more upset. So how do we, how do you figure?
That, Commissioner, you're identifying one of many different issues and balances we have to strike, and I will be working with the chief and the police department to try to figure out a definition of the type of vehicles that the Borough wants to prescribe for parking in an area. That's one of the tricky things. The way this draft was put together, it's for the entire borough. You're not going to be able to park big. For instance, you can't just bring your eighteen-wheel truck and park it on a residential street and leave it there for the weekend, and that actually happens on occasion. So that's the type of thing that we're looking to prohibit. And then it gets a little more gray because some people have private vehicles that are fairly large, like an F-250 pickup truck, for instance, is essentially equivalent to a commercial vehicle, but yet it's widely used by individuals for personal reasons. So we have to, we have to craft something, and I'll work with the police department to, to come up with something that's going to be satisfactory to everyone.
As long as the chief and Ralph, you know, are on board, which I'm sure they will be eventually, yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Okay. Good, under business items? All right, moving on to old business, two-hundred-fiftieth birthday committee. If you're interested in participating on a volunteer committee, send an email to the clerk. The municipal app is on hold. Historical museum is also on hold. Concession agreement, Hilton Zone and Beach Chairs, that's on hold. Traffic calming, I believe, so the pedestrian crosswalks will be, that project's going to start right after the weekend along Park and also along Ocean and Atlantic Avenue.
Mayor, most of those have been installed already, so we're right there with you.
Okay. Back beach excavation, that project has been completed, at least in terms of the first emergency plan. We can, we're going to table that because there's probably a bigger plan that we need to look towards for two thousand and twenty-six. Anything on dredging?
Still waiting to hear back from our friends at DOT, so nothing on that.
Okay. New Jersey Avenue Infrastructure Pre-County, I think we're just getting ready, we're ready to go out to bid on that. Funding is in place. And again, that project is the sanitary sewer system and the water, the water service on New Jersey from Cressy to Rambler before the county and the Borough embarks upon their, the county's road diet and the Borough's six blocks of business district beautification. Washington Avenue, Seaview Beach Fall Outfalls and Capacity, I think we received a recent email from our grant writer. It still looks positive in terms of the Borough receiving some dollars for the bayside flood mitigation and pump stations, as well as the oceanfront pump stations and capacity. So we're just still waiting to get the good word officially on that. The Army Corps Dune and the DEP Sand and Borrow Area Project, it's kind of, it's basically in a holding pattern. The Borough has requested a joint meeting with North Wildwood, Wildwood, and Wildwood Crest, along with the Army Corps and the New Jersey DEP. Unfortunately, the Army Corps indicated that they would initially, then they, again, indicated that they would not do so without their partner, which is the NJ DEP. The NJ DEP basically says, hey, we're not interested in meeting collectively as an island. We're just, we want to meet with you individually, and our position has been, and doesn't, you know, is, this is an island-wide project, so if we're going to talk about it, let's talk about it as a group, not with individual municipalities in full transparency. So that is the status of that project. The summer's here, so I don't know how much more we're going to hear about this project between now and, say, Labor Day, but stay tuned. Borough Hall renovation, so previously, on the resolutions, we passed a resolution to retain the architect to begin the preliminary work on the exterior side and the police side, and any other modifications to Borough Hall in hopes of a two thousand and twenty-six project. That's it for old business, governing body. Do you have anything, that, for new, old, or anything?
I do for the renovations. Mark, maybe you can help me with this one. Is this something that, I know you had did this maybe two or three years ago. Is this similar to kind of piggybacking onto what you did, or do it with the analysis of the building?
I believe so. I wasn't involved in a meeting with the architect because it's an architectural service, and there was a meeting that he had here with Borough Personnel, but it'll be something similar to that, correct?
I don't know if I could get an idea of what we're actually renovating, or what we're actually going to the building. I don't know if that's, Mayor, if you could supply that, or Joe, I don't know what actually, what the plan is for that.
Absolutely. So whatever we get from our architect that comes through, maybe we can either have a special meeting to make sure that everybody's involved in it and/or individually.
Yeah, let me comment. So the, so the architect that we just retained, they will hold, now that they've been formally retained, they will hold stakeholder meetings with individuals here in Borough Hall, the police side, everyone on, I'll call it the administrative side. The scope of the project is the exterior of the building, the brick facade, the roof is in bad shape, the windows are in bad shape, and then the police side, if you've ever been over there, it's, it's very, very choppy, and the bathrooms are really outdated. So it would be primarily that's the scope, and there might be some additional, you know, landscaping or parking items that we need to address as well.
So far, what his service would be is to, to work with you, coordinate with you here, input, take input from the departments, and start to put a plan together they call programming, and then based on your feedback, you help shape that program, and at the end of the day, when you're done, it's the program you want.
Mark, what's the name of the architect company we're using?
Oliver Shastky and Kiss.
Thank you. And the integrity study, are we going to have to redo that one, or are we okay with that? Is everything, we're fine?
You mean structural?
Yes.
So that'll be folded into what he's going to do?
Okay.
Right. And I don't, unless we add another floor or other offices on top of what we have, I don't suspect that there'll be any structural.
Yeah, there shouldn't be any heavy duty.
Because really just taking what we have and, and just kind of giving it a facelift on the exterior. The inside, inside is, you know, taking down some walls and remodeling and making it flow. So from the time you walk in the door to the time you leave, you know, everything flows. Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Brings us to public comments. Again, we do not need your address, just need your name. Come on up to the podium, and we'll start with anybody here. Yes, sir.
Mayor, I just wanted to let the public know, the police department has received a grant from the New Jersey Division of Highway Traffic Safety to participate in the Booker Ticket Campaign, which runs May nineteenth through June first. So there will be extra officers out there ensuring that veterans are wearing their seatbelts, so just keep that in mind when you're traveling through town.
Okay.
You want to say anything about the parking meters being turned on?
May fifteenth is the date that our parking meters are going to be on, and they will be enforced, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
All right. Anybody else? Public comment? Come on up to the podium.
Dave McCoys, I have a few items. On the Dune project, is there anybody else on the island that's a hard no? I know we are. Last time we spoke, Wildwood was leaning in that direction. Lord of Talentship said, hey, whatever happens, happens. Anybody else who joined us is a hard no?
I would, I would, I can't speak for a while, but my reaction is that they are a hard no.
But they've not told the DEP they're a hard no?
Uh, I think they have. And, and, so we have, so the Borough hasn't formally withdrawn from the project. The Borough is still taking the position that, hey, is there an opportunity to work with the DEP and the Army Corps to, to salvage certain aspects of, of, of the project and the goals? So that's why we haven't formally, we believe, you know, if we're going to talk about it, because what happens is when there's individual discussions going on, we don't understand what's, what other municipalities may need, or what their concerns are. So it's better to work together as an island in hopes of modifying the plan, because the only thing that we can speak to right now is, is how it affects Wildwood Crest. We need to get a better idea of, you know, North Wildwood sand erosion, it's an issue for them, and it's an issue for them, but it's also an issue for Wildwood Crest. We just don't believe that Wildwood Crest, and I can't speak for Wildwood, should supply the sand to rebuild their beaches when they have potentially an option at the Hereford Inlet. So that's where that project is. We're, it's still, as the project exists now, I would venture to say that Wildwood Crest is a, is a no. Wildwood is probably a no. North Wildwood is in need of sand. If we, they can get their sand somewhere other than Wildwood or Wildwood Crest, I think they would be happy with that.
But forgive me, isn't the project to prevent, ignoring North Wildwood, because they got their issues, and that's not going to go away anytime soon. But the project is to prevent flooding in the event of a huge storm, about a sixteen-foot dune, length of the island, to protect the islands.
Right.
Okay, so I don't understand, North Wildwood's sand issue is, is, you know, it's a separate issue. Whether they take sand from us or they find it someplace else, they're going to have to continue to do that. But the whole thing, you know, we're, I use opposing, we're exploring options, not opposing, because, you know, like what it's going to do to the beach. But the Dune project itself is going to do that independent of where West, North, North Wildwood gets their sand. I mean, if you were to, if you're telling me is that if North Wildwood could take sand out of the inlet, they'd be a no on this project?
I think that's hard for us to answer for another community.
It is true.
But I would, I would, sorry to jump in, but I would think that they probably would be.
Okay.
There are two aspects of the program. There's the contiguous dune, and then there's the sand barring. The sand barring, most of that project, that particular part of the project sends sand down the North Wildwood. But it also takes sand, demolishes the easterly side of our existing dune system, doesn't add on to it, it demolishes it, excavates it back, moves the water line closer to the oceanfront. That's, that's the issues that we're concerned about. Are we opposed to sitting down with the Army Corps, who is concerned about that one-in-every-hundred-year storm? We're happy to sit down with them, just figure out if there's modifications to our existing dune system that we could be looking at, but we can't get them to the table.
Okay. The info sharing issue with Stone Harbor, where can I get information on that? The agreement with Stone Harbor on building codes?
Sure. Trish can, Trish has a copy.
Yep, I just got it.
You mentioned that the excavation project was done. Congrats, no water on those three blocks. Not so good for Rambler and Orchid, or from Nashville South. Clearly, we're not going to do anything else this year. The heavy equipment's gone, the beach walks are all down. How do we decide that those three blocks were the only three blocks on the island in the Borough that needed attention? I'm suspecting we didn't do a survey anywhere, because when I asked about Nashville South at the last meeting, I was told, well, we'll send the three groups who said we needed to do these three blocks out to take a look.
Okay, so the beach was surveyed. The blocks, other than the three blocks that were, that were done, were surveyed. The results of the survey showed that they were not as low as the three blocks that were identified in the emergency plan. So the idea is to take the rest of those streets, the back beaches, and, as you may have heard me say, and focus on the program for two thousand and twenty-six. So the goal is get through for this year, and hopefully we can, we can do that.
So those, those three blocks were just woefully lower than any of the others?
That's correct.
Okay. My final subject, beach boxes. Number 640 on the beach today. I've asked this question before, do we have a plan for how many is too many? And if not, are we at least limiting on a street level? I mean, if every person on St. Paul says they want a box, that's 60 boxes.
Okay, so I, I would have to, so if there's certain streets that are overloaded with beach boxes, I'm not aware of which streets that they are, certainly.
Mayor, I'm not saying that they are, all I'm asking is, do we have a plan? I mean, are we going to go to 2,000 boxes?
No, I think, no, I think, so just to be clear, so we have a lo, a very large waiting list for the beach boxes. Beach boxes are running currently at $480 per box, per, per door. That is a revenue source that's very important to the borough, but also something we're providing a service.
Look, I understand that, just tell me what we think the max number is. I mean, I know that's $500 a box, and it'll be $500 a box for another 50 next year, $500 a box for another 50 the year after that. Do we have a plan for the max number in total, and do we have a plan to limit it on any individual street?
Okay, so the answer is, at this particular moment, there's no, there's no specific number limitation for an individual street. I would defer to our recreation department and/or our beach patrol to say, hey, this is, you know, too much. So those, that, those comments have not been made yet, or their statements have not been made yet. So that's, that would tie directly into the overall plan. I think that we're, we're trying to be accommodating to the folks that would like to, but I know we certainly can't pollute the beach with, with too many beach boxes. So I think we're, we're, I would say we're real close, though unofficially, to, at that max level. But I'll, again, it's, it's a recommendation.
So real, 640 is real close, so I think 700 would probably be too many.
I, I think that, I think, yeah, not to put recreation on the spot, because they're not here to speak for themselves, but my, in conversations with them, and I believe with the beach patrol, there would be some, hey, we're starting to get overcrowded with these in these areas, they would make a recommendation to move some to another area. That hasn't happened yet, there's still, there's still plenty of space. So when that happens, we'll, you know, we can certainly ask them, you know, for their input on that. But as of right now, I don't think any of us have had any conversations on what's the, what's the limitation of the boxes that we're going to put out there.
And no, no question or no conversation about how many is too many? I'm done.
Well, I'll piggyback on that for just one second. A lot of it does go, as Mayor had said, with public safety, specifically, some of those boxes, they stick out too far and high tide, we can't get around them, so there's a call somewhere, it's going to be a little difficult. So we'll keep that safety factor in effect. Also, every time the boxes are put out, the chief, Buddy Johnson from the beach patrol, helps supervise, so we have, you know, consistency. And also, you have to remember too, that our beaches are not just a straight line going down. In some areas, we can put a couple extra because the beaches are wider.
All I'm asking is, are you thinking about it? Okay, and I'm more focused on how many is too many. Okay? Because this revenue conversation will come up every time.
But, sir.
If I could, and we have these conversations yearly in recreation as to how many is too many. We, we've, we've had these conversations for three or four years in conjunction with the beach patrol and our commissioner, which is Mayor Cabrera. The, the demand for these boxes is extremely high, as you know. There are a lot of people who cannot get boxes. They want them. We are trying to accommodate as many people as possible, particularly our senior citizens, those who may have issues with disabilities and that type of thing. The big discussion that we have had has been, as Commissioner Schiff knows from overseeing the beach, is down the south end, where he has mentioned the beach is narrower, there may be issues of, of trucks getting by. We have tried to place those boxes in areas where there will be less effect on an emergency vehicle moving. But to answer your general question, we have had these conversations every year. We're adding 25, we've added 25 boxes each of the last two years. That's one box per street. With the size of the beach, I don't think that at this moment, one box per street is making that much of a difference. But those conversations, as the commissioner said, are, are being had.
Brian, I understand that. All I'm trying to get is somebody to tell me that 1,000 is as many as we're going to do, because the demand is there and it won't go away.
Yeah, well, I, I don't know if we've ever had that kind, I don't want to speak over these guys since they're leading, but I, I don't know if we've ever, we've never had that specific conversation as to what is the maximum number, because as you know, up the north end, if the demand keeps coming in, we have plenty of room to add boxes. It becomes an issue down the southern.
So then it's how many is too many on any individual street? You're right. My problem is, there is no plan at this point in time, which is going to keep adding them because the revenue stream is too good to pass up. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Lisa Rippeau. I hope I'll be given enough time, like the gentleman that spoke before me, Mr.
Dave.
He wasn't like on the clock, five minutes, so I appreciate a little extra time, if I could have some too, because I've got a lot to talk about too.
Actually, I did watch his time. He was right at five minutes.
Okay. If you say so.
Go ahead.
I'm going to direct numerous questions to different people here. For anybody that's here, I apologize if what I'm going to say is offensive. I'll be talking about porn and other things that will make people uncomfortable here, and I'll do it every meeting.
I, I missed what you said, Ms. Rippeau. You talking about what?
I'll be talking about bullying and porn and other things.
Okay, I missed what you, I'm sorry. I just missed what you said.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Franco. So I'm here, Mr. Galzounis, for your first question, which of course you don't have to answer, you didn't answer many the last time I was here either, and you won't even look at me. But I'm going to set the record straight for my five minutes. The very first time I came out here was in November, it was the day after the election. And I talked about what a disaster 911 was, and I was in the middle of telling a story, and you abruptly interrupted me and bullied me and did not let me finish my story so you could tell me how and how I could speak. And I said to you point blank that day, don't tell me what to do. I remember my words. So please don't accuse me of coming out here and starting things with you, because I never did. You started it first. Where are the Oprah records for the information that I sent out this morning that I needed? The wiretap Oprah information, where would I get that from? You're not responding to any of my emails, so I come out here to ask you. You've not answered, Middle Township hasn't answered, and the county has not answered for the same thing. Why aren't you responding to that Oprah request? You're past your seven days.
I believe you did receive a response to that Oprah request from the
That response was a vague, that, that response was a vague response. Do you, do you know what the response to that was? No responsive records available. That is a vague, open-ended, for legal purposes.
Means the document doesn't exist.
It's a yes or no question.
This is, Ms. Rippeau, just make your
It's a yes or no question. I have my five minutes.
I got, I agree with you, and I'm trying to give you the five minutes. Make your presentation, but I don't want, what I don't want to do is, this is not interrogation. We're not going
Okay. Can I ask Mr. Lloyd a question?
You can make a statement. I don't, I'm not, we're not getting engaged.
I want to know why he called me on March 4, 2025, when he knew I wasn't taking any phone calls. I want to know why Mr. Thompson, that owns Thompson's Hardware, called me out of the blue when he didn't have my number. And I reported name after name, and I gave all this information to the police when I reported cyberbullying. Have you seen the picture yet, Mr. Schiff? Because you seem very not able to answer my question on how you would feel if your wife or daughter or someone, have you seen the picture yet? Because I have it here, if you need to see it.
I don't need to see it.
Okay.
And please don't bring my wife up, she passed away.
I'm sorry. How about somebody else?
Thank you.
I've said that to everybody, your wife, your kid. Don't take it personal. I was cyberbullied. My husband died too. And I've been treated like an outsider since when I moved here, and I was laid off by Mr. Cabrera. So here, I was arrested for speaking out about corruption. Three days after I made it public here about corruption, I was arrested and yanked out of my house. And do you know who I feel sorry for? That guy right there. Because he's a young guy, and he was at my house, and he was really nice to me. And he felt bad about what he was doing. I know that he did. That's the next generation of police. While we're talking about island-wide, doing things as an island, I've mentioned here already how we can cut costs. You don't need to redo this building. The police can become, and public safety can become, an island-wide thing, and lower township can kick in, just like the dunes. Someone spoke here about the dunes here, about the insurance and what it would cost us if we have a catastrophic storm. That's what he's asking about. If you're going to be transparent, then say what Joyce Gould talked about here that came from Kevin Yeko. You're making a battle and fighting a battle about a dune system that you believe will be sufficient in a catastrophic storm. Are you paying for when my house goes over? Because at one time, I believe, the bay met the ocean here, didn't it not? It's not about your dune system. It's beautiful. I love it. He shouldn't have to talk about beach boxes four times. It shouldn't be, we'll talk about it again some other time. It's a simple request. I would like an internal investigation done on this late tax notice. Who do I get this and this spoofing done? Right now, we've got police here. This is spoofing. This is harassment, and we've yet to do an Internal Affairs. Who's doing it?
The late tax notice, Ms. Rippeau, you can talk to
I already did, Mr. Franco, thank you. I've already done that numerous times. I've asked them to explain it. How many of you people have gotten late notices from a bank for being 10, 18 days late? I've never gotten one. Tell everybody else who's harassing me. How about the phone? Who's doing the spoofing? I want an Internal Affairs investigation done on this. I reported this to Mr. Lloyd and Mr. Chief of Police from Middle Township, who wanted to arrest my son. How about some spoofing? I want wiretap information, and no one's giving it to me.
Okay.
Is my five minutes up?
Actually, it was six, but, yes.
Thank you very much for that extra minute. I do appreciate it.
No worries. Anybody else have a comment? We're going to go to the conference line. Is there anybody that has public comment for the good of the order? Okay, Commissioner comments?
You guys have any?
I have a couple, but
I have, yeah. I know this Sunday, creating the crest, 10 o'clock starts until 1 o'clock. This year, it's at the Arc Pavilion, 6301 Ocean Ave. Also, Chief Floyd already mentioned, parking meters tomorrow, May 15. And that's me, that's all I got.
So Saturday is the Mayor's Wellness Walk, 8:15 at the Crest Pier. Monday begins National Public Works Week. Just, this department we have in Wildwood Crest works very hard to get, to get us all ready for the summertime, but also year-round. So if you see any of our public work staff out at any time, but especially next week, give them a thumbs up, let them know how, how much appreciated they are, because that will go a, a very long way. There's a series of events that we have scheduled with, with the team starting next week. And also, I believe it's, was it ambulance, rescue
Yeah.
week as well, and I believe the governing body week is, starts next week as well.
Take it.
Or we're going to create
I'll ask for that one. That's pretty good.
So that's all I have for the good of the order.
All right. Chief Johnson asked me to reiterate some of the things that have been going on with the beach, and for the 2025 year season at the Wildwood Crest Beach Patrol, we're going to start our season Memorial Day weekend, the 24th to 26th. Then we'll be back on from May 31st, June 1st. And June 7th to September 7th will be full-time. We'll have guards there the whole time. Handicap transport, once again, will be from 11 o'clock to 4, or whenever the lifeguards are on duty. People that need the surf chairs, they can acquire them at the Beach Patrol Building from 10 to 5. Surfing beaches are Rambler and Primrose, Astor and Cardinal, and the Hollywood Topeka is a surfing beach from 10 to 12. If you have any questions, please call the Beach Patrol Building at 609-522-325. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we have it.
You have a closed session
Yes.
resolution?
Yes, it's authorizing executive closure in accordance with the provisions of the